Well, I think it's six o'clock hour. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting of the Gilmer County Board of Education to order. Mrs. Hurley.
Present.
Mr. Pritt.
Here.
Carl Armour.
Here.
Tom Ratliff.
Here.
Here and accounted for. This time, I'll lead us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is standing one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item on our agenda is the allegations. And I would remind those who are delegates that policy of the Gilmer County Board of Education is to limit your comments to three minutes. And I will let you know when your three minutes are up. David Dennison.
I'd like to start off, my name is David Dennison. Last month, I was here, made a statement that if you all on the board were not here for the children of Gilmer County or Gilmer County, that you should resign. I understand that that got under Mrs. Hurley's skin.
Oh, mercy.
I do not appreciate that you made a phone call to Braxton County, then to Parkersburg County to get in touch with my brother Jacob Dennison. And then while in that conversation, Gavin to mention that my wife does work for the Board of Education. I don't appreciate that. I'm a very easy person in this county to find. And if you don't feel that I had the place to say what I did, I will let you know, my family has had a business in this county for seventy, over seventy-five years. The majority of the people that are employed with the Board of Education, I either know or have known. I have lived here for thirty-six years. So, that gives me the right. And for you to call my brother's place of work twice, I do not appreciate. And that's just all I'm gonna say. I feel that it was inappropriate. And I hope it does not happen again.
Well, Mr. Dennison, for clarification purposes. Well, I could clarify. I may ask him to clarify.
That's all I had to say?
That's hardly fair. I did not call his brother. I called him in error.
Uh, Mrs. Hurley.
Because I was told that that was him.
We do not discuss the report of delegation. If you want to discuss it later, that's fine.
Okay, very well.
Okay, Erica Dennison.
I think Haskins did a fantastic job of embracing our concerns. Whenever he came here last month to talk, he came as a citizen of Gilmer County, who's lived here our entire lives, and he was troubled by what he was seeing. He wanted to just come and make that known. And that's all I have to say.
All right, item four, consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. Any discussion, any of the items under item four?
I have a question about the student transfer. Can we have an actor at the Cali on the students who could have gone to Lynn who elected to stay in Gilmer County?
Right now, we're taking role each day. And once it settles down, I'll have a better figure on where our students are coming from and things of this nature. But you guys gotta realize that at Troy, we had six kids from Ritchie, four from Dogdridge. We had seven of our county's students here that went over there for enrollment. We had three from Lewis County. We had six that DHHR pulled out. We had two or three that transferred during the year. So, you're looking at about twenty-nine or thirty kids that we have no, we didn't have any control over. So, that's something that a lot of people don't realize. We don't, we don't have control over Lynn's kids. But as soon as everything settles down in the next week or so to, pardon, the next board meeting, I can give you the enrollment of how many kids we have from Troy that are there.
Thank you.
It'll be a better, you'll get a better picture of it when the second month enrollment comes out.
Yeah. Will we be able to get the homeschool numbers?
Well, we're still taking requests on homeschooling.
I understand.
Yeah.
When you go back next month, you think you'll have a friend reading those?
We should, yeah.
Any other discussion? Any other questions?
Oh, I do have one other question. Make sure I understood this. On page two of those transfers, we have a number showing the grade, the school, the Gilmer form yes, and the home, being Ritchie, and the home board yes, and Lewis, and Braxton, I might add. Are those students coming into the high school on the top of this page and those going out on the bottom? Or am I misunderstanding this?
What page are you on?
I'm on the second page of the attachment four B, student transfers.
They're going from Gilmer County to Braxton County. And they're going from Gilmer County to Lewis.
No, I'm talking about the top.
The top, we're getting, we're getting those.
Those are incoming. So, we have all those at the top incoming with three to Braxton, one to Lewis.
Yeah.
Okay. That's what I didn't understand, the one at the top. I wasn't quite sure.
We've got a lot of people transferring into our county.
Right. And that was the impression I was getting. Okay. I wanted to make sure I was reading it correctly.
Okay, anything else? All those in favor of the motion to approve signify with saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right, item five, new business. Any new business?
No.
Item six, reports, discussion, follow-up. Uh, Dr. Armour, Gilmer career center.
All right. Well, we didn't cover a lot this last time because we're between semester and more of just cleanup type work. One development was a gentleman by the name of Gene Colson. He's the executive director of the Consortium for Entrepreneurial Education. He came and made a presentation. And a couple of things he pointed out was that Calhoun and Gilmer County had been designated among the eight poorest counties in Appalachia. And he talked to, in depth, about its wishful thinking. If we assume Fortune 500 companies are gonna come here, so the bottom line was, we're going to have to make our way our own, either small business people or whatever. And the reason he came, he wanted to get permission to go into the schools and talk to children at early ages to inform them what entrepreneurship really means. And he thought he might sow seeds that people have never even taught. You may be able to form a business of your own, and it may be a way of heightening our economic plight here in the county. He got a grant, and the only stipulation in the grant, if we participate, each child in each school has to have an opportunity one day to hear about a big enough. Okay. We re-elected officers, and by acclamation, we kept the ones we have. The superintendent from Calhoun County is president, and our superintendent is a vice One of the items that came up, it's pretty timely for those of us who have children, is cyber safety training. There's a new bit of legislative centers to give the children this training. And to boil it down, it's for keeping kids safe in a wired world. And in this day and age of computers, you're in great need for staying safe online, knowing the dangers, help prevent children from being harmed, and knowing what to do, and how to keep safe. So, that's gonna be a program short. Now, one thing, I'm not gonna have to sound like a broken record each time, and talk about a math instructor, because we did agree to hire a math instructor, and that is Kerry Hammer. So, that's a great development for the curriculum. When it came to substitutes, just like every place else, there's a problem down there times getting qualified substitute teachers. So, the agreement was made to use a substitute list from both counties. So, that'd give us a bigger choice when we have to hire someone. We presented postings for substitute custodia and evening alternative learning instructors. So, those postings are probably out right now. Now, here's something that we've talked about before, we still haven't handled, is the simulated workplace drug testing program. There's a movement afoot that each child who is enrolled in a locational program, one way or another, if the plan goes right, will have to undergo a drug testing. The mechanics haven't been worked out, legal problems to discuss, and it's even getting down to the point, maybe people in FFA, because that's considered a vocation to take drug testing. So, we're gonna have to find out about that. One new development regarding a program is they're gonna start a commercial baking option. So, second-year students, I call it food service, but they call it something different. They can sign up to take baker training and to qualify for good jobs in high-end restaurants and places like that, which may... So, we adjourned, and our next meeting is in August twenty-fourth.
My next recent meeting is this, later this week. So, I've not had a meeting since our last meeting. But what I mentioned the last time concerning a renewed interest in improved teacher training and improved quality overall, I think, Carl, it goes along with what you said. We have a shortage of math teachers in many other critical areas. And the truth is, there are not replacements in the pipeline. So, somewhere, we have to address getting able students into those areas where we have critical needs in our public schools. And I think this is going to be an ongoing discussion. And I know our legislature is very much interested in some action along that line. So, I see good signs coming. I think we're going to have improved quality, and we're going to have some steps to have highly qualified personnel. Okay, item seven, superintendent.
Wait a minute, this is discussion, and at this point, I believe I can discuss what I was just heard in delegation?
Uh, I don't think.
Well, now, for clarification purposes, I believe I couldn't respond. I was just told a few moments ago that I could in discussion.
Well, I didn't say where. I don't think it's an appropriate place to discuss it here. I think this is something probably you should discuss with the board in private.
Well, I don't think that, I would just assume discuss anything I do in the public, because I haven't done anything I feel wrong. You know, I don't see a need to go into executive session to tell the truth. You know? And the truth is that I was told indirectly that Jake...
The question, wait before you do it, if you're gonna do that, then they're gonna have a right to respond back to what you're making allegations on your part.
Well, I'm not making any allegations, but they certainly, they can respond to anything I said. I tried to catch the gentleman before he left the meeting last time, and it just too quick for me, I didn't realize he was leaving. Because my purpose was to apologize for anything that I may have done that upset you. That's why I tried to contact him. I was told that the name was Jake, that's how I understood it, because I didn't know the name. I did recognize the last name from the county, but I really didn't know the person. And so, I tried to contact Jake. And when I did, he said, "I know," he said, "you've got the wrong one." He said, "That's my brother." I said, "Okay." I said, "Well, I'm terribly sorry to bother you. I was just wanting to have a discussion about my feeling, you know, about him apologizing for anything I had done." He said, "Well, had it been me a few years..." This is the conversation, so you may, you don't believe this is true. He said, "Had it been me a few years ago, I might have discussed, because they wouldn't let my kids into the county." He said, "But this is my brother, not me." He said, "I'll text him and let him know that you're trying to reach him." I said, "I really appreciate it." And I gave my phone number. And that was my only purpose. The conversation came up, it's trying to determine who I was talking to. There was no other purpose. There was no animosity towards whoever. You know, certainly, I support every citizen saying exactly what they feel and exactly what they think, whether I agree with it, disagree with it, whether it puts me in a bad light or anyone else, I just feel like it's the right. And if you were upset by that, I do truly apologize, because that was my only vote. I had no intention of discussing anything beyond that, just issuing an apology if there was anything on my behalf that I had done to upset you, because it really wasn't quite clear. And I know you didn't wanna bring specifics up, I understand that. You know, I just wanted to make that statement. There was never any animosity, and I really was a mistaken identity. And to my knowledge, I don't know that I ever spoke to your employer, because the only one I was looking for was Jake, trying to leave a message saying, "Please give me a call, I'd like to talk to you about that." And then I found out through Jake, very nice man, that I just had the wrong one. So, if that inconvenienced you or upset you, I am terribly sorry. I did not mean to in any way.
Okay, let's move on to item seven, superintendent's information.
Here's the monthly treasurer's report already approved by the State Department and stuff. Just give you a copy of those for your information. And along with that will be the financial statements and your bank requisitions and things like this. But those are already all approved, done by the State Department, paid and everything just for your information. One thing before we get into, a couple other things. And I need to stress this more important than anything else. Again, if you want something on the agenda, I feel that you need to come to this board. I think the board needs to prove it before it's put on the agenda, that we act as a board on these nights, as we don't have a night like this, we're individual people, and we have just as much right as somebody off the streets as we have as a board member being elected. If you want something on here, on the agenda, I prefer you bring it up at a board meeting, and we can put it on the agenda. But I'll answer some of the questions that I have. I've got six questions. First of all, the technology inventory, if you wanna see the technology inventory, please make a point of Mrs. Stoddaker, and she'll show you the inventory that we're constantly keeping up to date and everything else like that. The delegation policy, we've had it in front of you all twice. No changes were made. I see no reason why we wanna bring it back again unless all five of you all wanna bring it back again.
How did we have it before us twice? I knew that we voted one time to table it to the next session.
You had it when you approved it, and I brought it back, and you decided to keep it as is.
You decided to go as, because we didn't vote on it the second time.
Nobody voted on it.
It was tabled to go to the next session, because you just received it that morning.
Wasn't tabled, it was not voted on, not acted on, and I think so I didn't bring it back.
Well, I do disagree with you there, but...
All right, and the CUSAC money that you have, that's with the State Department and the county. They're in a process of looking at it. It'll go to the State Board if they wanna approve it or not for us. Again, the status of a teacher at Normantown in Allen Bridge, that's with us and the State Department to make that, discussing personnel. I prefer not to put names out and discuss personnel in public. One thing I will not do, and I'll tell you this, board, right now, I will not discuss students. I was requested to talk about student. I will not discuss any students or about any students unless it's in executive session and I have to bring it in front of the board. So, those are the questions that I've got. The one I don't understand, it says board slash citizens communication, I have no idea.
Oh, well, could I explain that since I sent it?
Sure.
Uh, there was a, first off, I wanna compliment Mr. Frazier, because his bus schedule compared to the one that I read in the Western Democrat for another area was exceptional, very clear. And I will say to you, you know, that that was well presented, and you are to be commended. Because the bus schedule that I read in another paper for another county, you would have to live there and probably have a child on every route to tell where and what they were going. It was almost like it was in code. Yours was clear, concise, it wasn't difficult to determine that route and the following, and to see where the children would be picked up and dropped off, and at what time. And I think that's a great job. And that was what my point was, is the communication. They did do a super job over there on the, another portion of the article that talked about what the schools were doing, what was happening in the schools. And I just really thought, wow, this is great. This is, it's really open, it's, you know, describes everything that's going on in the school, what they're gonna do this year. And I was just asking to encourage the superintendent, if we could do some advertising like that or provide some public information like that, you know, to have communications between the community and the Board of Education on a more positive and transparent note. Just basically, you know, activities, functions, things that we just don't see enough of. And I know they're hard to get out in advance, I understand, and they're expensive. But that was just really a beautiful article. As I said, in the one respect, as far as the community involvement, it was grand. I think we far exceeded them on the transportation route presentation.
Mrs. Hurley, to add a little bit to what you're saying is, maybe sometimes it's not nice to discuss with other counties what you're gonna be doing in your county. But we did talk about that, and we're working with the newspaper right now to put a newsletter, our newsletter in there, and we're getting people to pay for ads. So, we're gonna have a page once a month that's gonna be dedicated, nothing but to the educational process.
In the local newspaper?
In the local newspaper.
Oh, that's fantastic. Good news.
So, that's what we discussed in the meeting, and I told them of Lewis County, so maybe they copied off of us. Neither's yours, say.
I don't know, but they really, in their newspaper, did an outstanding job. You know, and you have to give them credit where credit is due.
But the thing with Mr. Frazier, we did hear from a couple of our bus drivers that he did a great job, and I'm not knocking any other county, but we did...
Yeah, you know, that's up to them, how they do it.
We did do a good job with that. What I wanna do right now is, well, we run a summer program with curriculum and summer school, and Sherri West will present the PowerPoint on what we did this summer.
I have a copy for you. You're welcome. Very welcome. I have a book, but it's in the car. I can go out and get that after I present and then share that. There's also a copy at the board office. And you're wondering what book is she talking about? We'll get to that in just one moment. I just briefly wanna share with you about good things happening in Gilmer County, because there are some really good things. This summer, we had our summer school program. We had eight teachers, and all four of our elementary schools were represented. We had a school psychologist, our office manager, Cook, two bus drivers, and the director for the program. Our student population totaled forty-six, and they were representative of all four elementaries and grades, pre-K through sixth grade. As a staff, we developed the use of our thinking maps. And if you're wondering what that is, this is the circle map. This is what we're utilizing this week in Gilmer County schools. Mrs. Dennison is shaking her head, yes. Circle map is the first one, bubble map, double bubble. Those are some teaching tools that teachers are utilizing in our county to help children organize their thoughts and develop writing. We shared that with RESA Seven, and they displayed our work on bulletin board there. So, Gilmer County was highlighted at RESA Seven. So, good things are happening. Teachers also worked to develop project-based learning, and they really experienced freedom in doing that. And so, we're really gonna work to do that in our schools during the school year. Very positive experience. It was student-initiated, students were interested, they helped to lead and guide our instruction, and that was, that was exciting. We also developed some teaching techniques such as morning message. You know, how do you teach children to edit their writing? Well, children write, they give it to the teacher, the teacher edits it and gives it back. But that doesn't teach the children how to edit. And so, morning message is a teaching technique that shows them repeatedly how to write and edit their own writing. And that was very positive all across the age groups, and I have lots of samples I could share with you. Lots of hands-on learning. We also utilize the program, it's called Core Clicks, and it's a program that was purchased for our schools. So, teachers have also received some training on that, and will be utilizing it in our classrooms. It's part of a program, it's called Close Reading. It's a strategy where we focus in on and work on comprehension of nonfiction articles, science and social studies. We also worked on guided reading and student choice. So, often in school, teachers tell children to read, and children really enjoy choosing what they would like to read. And so, summer school offered that opportunity. We did publish a book. This is what Mr. DiVano was referring to. Our book was titled Sky to Earth. And from that experience, our students responded so positively to that, because so often, we ask students to write, and there's no purpose. Why am I writing this? The teacher doesn't even read it. It's just, it's just a three-minute thing that she makes me do every day, and she never even reads my journal page. And that's very discouraging, and they don't want to participate. But when you say, "We're gonna publish a book, and you will have a page in the book," oh, now they're interested. That's real. And so, we were able to publish a book. And so, a goal that I have personally, I would like to see each of our schools publish a book this year. And so, we'll work with partners on that, maybe to split into a primary book and a secondary book, looking at our schools. But we'll work on that, making writing more purposeful. And these are just some pictures from our three weeks, building a space rocket, conducting science experiments outside, some that failed, but that's part of science. You can see our astronaut girls, because you know, girls can be astronauts. It's not just a male thing, it's females can participate. Then we went swimming through a book. We took a field trip to the public library, and they experienced dropping the book in, going in and choosing the book, checking the book out. They went through the entire process. They took home information to complete a library card, if they would like to have a card at the public library. And then we went to the pool, we went swimming, and then at pool break, we gathered around a campfire and read a campfire story about aliens who came from outer space to Earth, hooked them in, it's a chapter book. And then at the end of the week, the children took home string backpacks that our Family Resource Network provided. And in the backpack, there was a student choice. They picked a book they wanted, and we ordered it for them. They took home two books on topic, Earth and space, and then they took home that chapter book. We read one chapter, they're hooked, they wanna finish reading, and then they took home their copy of the student book that we wrote. Our older students were survivalists, and so they had, they created a volcano and erupted it and researched that. And then again, a picture there at our public library. That was just a great experience. Our public library would love to team up with teachers in our county, send them a topic you're studying, they will find books for you and send books to the schools. So, there's a really great partnership there that we can take advantage of. Parent engagement, just this summer, we were at the Folk Festival for sixteen hours. Dr. Armour joined me. Thank you, sir. And we tried to get people to sign up for the Dialogue Circles, but that wasn't quite as successful. But we gave out a hundred books. Lots of kids took books and were very excited. We also supported our Family Resource Network. We went on July second and spoke about school readiness. And then we went again August sixth and talked about literacy in the home and public. We participated in Batman. He came to town, and it was very exciting. The library sponsored that, and Sanford Baptist supported it, Family Resource Network. Then we had a booth at the Family Resource Fair on July twenty-fifth. We participated in National Night Out, that was phenomenal. Gave out a hundred and fifty to two hundred backpacks to children in Gilmer County. And probably what was most exciting, the fire trucks. They had a ladder truck and a water tank truck, and they took kids around the block, and they got to ride on those trucks. And that was, I wish I could've, but anyway. Then we had preschool meet your teacher last Friday in Gilmer County. And so, I can't really be at three places at once. So, I visited Sanford and Glenville in the morning, and then I actually was at Normantown at one o'clock as parents were coming in and talking with Mrs. Combs. So, making connections there with our parents. Community engagement, I'm serving as secretary for our Family Resource Network, and that includes a monthly meeting, and then again, networking and getting lots of community support. I made a call this evening and to the West Virginia Extension Office, and again, just very supportive. We just have really good things in Gilmer. We're small, which can be negative, but being small can also be positive. And so, we're trying to emphasize some good things. We are having, thank you, Mr. Ratliff, we're having our first community discussion tomorrow evening. Mr. Ratliff gave an announcement... Mr. Ratliff gave an announcement at Sanford Baptist Church two Sundays ago and reeled them in. And so we have enough people, we're actually going to divide and have two discussions tomorrow evening. It'll be our first round. So one group will be meeting at Sanford Baptist. The other group will be meeting at the Country Store in Glenville. Phew, yes. We're going to write a plan as to how to disperse books into our county. The grant provides funding for that, but we need to hear from the community. And there's a lot of great ideas, lots of great ideas. So we'll, we'll see what those ideas are, put them on paper, and share that plan with you.
What time are these meetings?
Tomorrow evening at six o'clock, and either location would be Sanford Baptist or at the Country Store. Friday, we had a great opportunity. There were fifteen that joined Mrs. Minnie at Glenville Elementary for our first Cradle to Classroom committee meeting. And this brought in people from the Extension Office, Family Resource Network. There were four from the Head Start program there. Our preschool teachers were there. West Virginia Extension Office was there. Again, just pulling everyone together to the table and saying, "What can you offer?" And just a really great kickoff for positive things. So we're looking forward to meeting again September fourth and continuing to work with our children even before they come to school. Supporting our teachers and principals, we worked with Thinking Maps training on June sixteenth. Jennifer Adams was here from the National Council of Teachers of English on June seventeen and eighteen. We then had our summer program, June twenty-second through July tenth. We had three hours every day of P D. The teachers really enjoyed that. They just really enjoyed learning from their colleagues and having discussions, and it was great. And again, building towards capacity where we bring teachers together from all three schools, all four schools at that time. Very positive, good stuff. Then we attended the Campaign for Grade Level Reading in Charleston, networked with some other resources that are out there to use for our literacy effort here in Gilmer County. We offered life grades training at our Technology CE Day here for the entire county on August fifth. August tenth, we presented the Core Clicks program to our special ed teachers. They are very excited about what that will offer. It reads the text to students, it highlights each word as it reads. There's interactive games they can play with that, and Mr. Powell and Mrs. Frame, and just very, very positive. Lots of good stuff there. Then August eleventh, I was at all three schools, did a literacy coach training on Thinking Maps, Daily Five, Accelerated Reader, and Core Clicks. And then today, phew, we met all day with Title I teachers, made some really great plans for the year, countywide events. So we want to invite you, so put this on your calendar, September fifteenth, come to Glenville City Park, six to seven thirty, for an art social and ice cream social. And that will be a countywide event for all of our elementary students and their families. So to know, we are also supporting our attendance efforts in Gilmer County. Ms. Stonaker has asked me to help with some of that, and so we're encouraging and working through that with our parent engagement piece of our grant. There is a text number. Now, I bought my first cell phone Friday night. Yes, the preacher was very impressed with that yesterday. Miracles are still happening. So if you have a cell phone and want to text that number and that message, you will be part of the Gilmer County Literacy. And what happens is, I go on the internet, and I can send you a message through email, but you will receive it as a text message. This is how we're going to reach Gilmer County parents. Everybody has a cell phone, even me now. And so we're going to, we're going to try to utilize a program. It's called Remind dot com. We're hoping to share that. We've shared it with our principals and our schools, but we're hoping each school will develop that program, but trying to get all of our parents connected through text messaging. I think it's a great, it's a great way. Upcoming.
I, I can tell you, I didn't really care.
Yes.
That cell phone won't reach me. We have a cell phone, but it stays in Maryland where my husband goes vacationing, because the cell phone, I could use it here in town. I can use it in Clarksville, but I can go to Normantown, and I know the police will tell you that cell phone won't reach. Is there any way I can get included on this with a email?
Yes, I can work with you on that. Yes, absolutely. Absolutely, yes, ma'am.
Culture.
Upcoming parent engagements. We have Meet Your Teacher at Head Start this Wednesday. Then Glenville State College, the Band Bash, is Friday night out at the Presbyterian Church. The college band will be performing at six thirty. Big community event, free food. They're going to have a bouncy house for the children and games. Then open houses are taking place, Sanford, Glenville, and Normantown. So I'll be going to each of those open houses and sharing information there. And then Birth Start, each month going and participating with Birth Start and supporting our parents and teachers there. So Wednesday will be my first full day at Normantown. Thursday will be my first full day at Sanford. And then Monday, Tuesday next week, will start at Glenville Elementary. So the best way to catch me is call my cell phone. Or send an email. Good thing, good things are happening.
I just can't, you can't send back.
So we just wanted to come and briefly share that with you. So thank you, Mr. DiVano. Thank you, board members.
Well, I want to compliment you on having the students involved in interest in space. That's the next frontier. And I think astrophysics, astronomy, if I were a kid today, this is something I'd want to get involved with, because I watch Ancient Aliens and all that stuff. It's absolutely fascinating, and we're dealing with questions that we will never be able to answer fully, not in our time, maybe a thousand years from now. But I think, you know, every generation has its frontier. We had ours back in the fifties and sixties, and then Sputnik went up, and that generated a whole new interest. And I think right now, what we're beginning to understand about the nature of space, kids have a wonderful opportunity here. And I also like the idea of kids writing about the things that they read and characters they encounter. Many years ago, I pedaled a program all over the state about combining literature, reading, and composition, all combined. We read short stories, and then we wrote about it. And I, I think you're right. If a student doesn't have something meaningful to write about, the writing becomes, you know, not very interesting. And I think what you're doing is stimulating some interest on the part of students. So yeah, if somebody reads what they write, that's, that's important.
Well, the key factor is that it's not me. It's a whole team. There is a tremendous team effort in Gilmer County, and we appreciate your supporting that team effort. So thank you.
That's the thing that I think we need to realize. You have an excellent group of employees, both professional and service personnel in this community. They go beyond the extremes. There isn't anything that I've asked them that they have not accomplished or have done for me. Again, it's hard to keep thanking them over and over again, but you do have a good group of employees in this county. They, they need to be recognized for that and stuff. Next thing on the agenda is our strategic plan and our technology plan. We will come back to the next meeting. We've got to have this end of the state for their approval. We'll present it to you, what we're sending to the state, so you guys understand what's in the strategic plan and what's in the technology plan, in case somewhere in the near future you're asked, "Have you seen the strategic plan or have you seen the technology plan?" It's similar to what we had last year. We just got to update some things, and then we're going to send it into the state and stuff like that. But you need to be knowledgeable of that. One thing that was brought to our attention today was our school messenger report. It's not on air, but I think we need to do, know, and you all need to know in case you get the answer. We're going to have to send a thing out to all the parents if they want to receive messages from us. The federal just passed a law that, the intrusion bill on our phones, and once school messenger gets something set up in September, it'll call you, and it'll ask you, "Do you want to, to this message, or you don't want a message?" Press five or four, whatever the number is. But we're going to have to get the permission from the parents. So if somebody brings you and says, "We're not getting the messages," you need to refer them back to the, to the school so we can get their phone number. But there is going to be a select that's going to have to go out to the parents to, okay, we can't do it verbally. We want to do it in writing, so we know what numbers to put in, what numbers we need to take out. So if we have kids show up in snow days or something like that, we want to get all this done before, before those days happen. Test results, I know we've got certain test results in, and we're going to bring it back in September and go over to you what the state has. I'll get my technology person with, along with our testing person to come in and show you where we stand test-wise with our kids.
September?
The September meeting. All right, there's been some, some calls in, and Mr. Frazier is the supervisor with a high school, and I let him take the phone calls. Of course, there's somebody that tells me that I'm not, don't want kids and don't have them in mind, because I will call this person directly back. We try to do it that if it goes through a chain of command, the principal, the principal to the supervisor, and then it'll come back to us. But I did talk to Mrs. Butcher a little bit ago. The dress code is in, in the student input policy, so it's there. She also sent a letter out on July tenth to all the parents about the dress code. And also, she met with students on July the twenty-third, six p.m. in the Commons area. They talked about the final exams, they talked about the dress code, they talked about attendance, dances and other matters. So the students came up mostly with the ideas of the dress code and some of the stuff that they had. Some of the students wanted to go a little more extreme, but the faculty and Mrs. Butcher decided that we'll do it this way. So if you get comments or something like that, refer them to Joe. Just send them to the principal, back to the principal, and if we have to answer, we'll answer it. But this is something, and I wanted to make sure that our, our students did this summer. So they had input into this.
Are we doing anything, and I don't know that we can, because I've had some contact on this issue. And I told them at that time I wasn't truly familiar with the policy. You know, we had policy, I did too, policy, et cetera, and that they needed to call. I directed them, I didn't know where else, because they apparently had been at the school.
Correct.
But are we doing anything or able to do anything? Because it was brought up that not every parent buys students new school clothes every year, unfortunately. Some are fortunate if they can afford new shoes and a new winter jacket. If a parent does not feel that what they have is appropriate under the fact that the policy is now being enforced, and I've discussed what that policy is, and I, personally, I agree with it, you know, but we had no input, as I told the parent, we really didn't know, and I was kind of taken aback. Is there, are there any avenues for us to offer them for assistance in clothing if they need it for summer clothing?
Financial assistance, not the money we have. But if that's the case, ask them to work with the principal, and then we'll, we'll find, we'll find something. We'll find something for them, someplace.
All right, the next regular board meeting is Monday, September twenty-first. Do I hear a motion for adjournment? Have a motion, do we have a second?
Between the two of us, especially if you have a second.
All right, we can adjourn.
She leans over and she says, "Who is that, and what does she do?"
This is a wonderful, wonderful.
I'm an old principal, I'm an old professor long ago, but I was wearing a dress.
Oh, she was sharp.
And I'm hard to impress, aren't I, Joe?